Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to call this Caddo Parish Commission meeting to order at 3:35 PM. Welcome, everyone. At this time, we would ask you to please silence your cell phones. Mr. Clark, if you would, give us a roll call.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Crackman.
Here.
Commissioner Greg Young.
President.
Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner John Paul Young.
Here.
Commissioner Burrell.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Gage Watts.
Present.
Commissioner Blake.
Here.
Commissioner Atkins.
Here.
Commissioner Cothran.
Here.
Commissioner Lazarus.
Here.
And Commissioner Epperson.
Present.
You have twelve of twelve members present, which does constitute a quorum.
Thank you so much. We've already had our invocation and pledge of allegiance in our prior meeting, but at this time, I would like to have a moment of silence for the Senator and her husband who lost their lives over the weekend, as well as the continued prayers for Senator Hoffman and his wife. Thank you.
Okay. At this point, we are at agenda additions, and I am not aware of any additional items to be added to the agenda today, unless you have any, Madam President?
No, sir, I don't have any.
Okay. That brings us then to citizens' comments, where citizens are asked to address the -- who'd like to address the commission on any issue other than zoning, are asked to fill out a comment card and return them here to my left. And at this point, I do not believe we have received any comment cards, but if there are any coming, we certainly just want to let you know those comments are limited to three minutes, but it does not appear that we have any. We do have a number of guests here for other items today, though. The next item, would you like me to go ahead and move forward?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is visitors, where we have a few scheduled visits today, and the first item under that section is a visit from the LSU Pilots baseball team.
Okay. Good afternoon. We're going to do a presentation, or are we just doing?
This is -- yes, ma'am. So, the special resolution has already been adopted, and I believe you presented it at a ceremony, but we do have another copy of that to be presented today, and we could call them up, and as they make their way to the front, we can read it into the record. And then if y'all wanted to share your comments, I think that would be appropriate.
Absolutely. At this time, if you would, please stand. If the members of the LSU Pilots baseball team and chancellor, please come to the front podium to receive the recognition.
All right. And this is a special resolution celebrating and commemorating the historic achievements of the 2025 LSU Pilots baseball team. It reads, "Whereas the Louisiana State University at Shreveport Pilots baseball team has achieved an unprecedented milestone in collegiate sports by completing a perfect 59-0 season, culminating in their first-ever NAIA Baseball National Championship. And whereas the historic accomplishment marks the first time in the history of college baseball at any level that a team has finished a season undefeated, solidifying the Pilots' place in the annals of sports history. And whereas, under the exceptional leadership of head coach Brad Neffendorf, the Pilots demonstrated remarkable skill and determination, overcoming a 4-0 deficit in the championship game to secure a 13-7 victory over Southeastern University. And whereas the team's dominance was evident throughout the season, leading the nation with a .361 batting average, 11.3 runs per game, 76 home runs, a 2.38 ERA, and a .982 fielding percentage. And whereas the individual Pilots players received recognition for the parts they played in this historic season as the 2025 Avista NAIA World Series, a all-tournament team includes five Pilots players, third baseman Josh Gibson, catcher Diego Aragon, outfielder Ian Monz, and pitcher Isaac Rhodes and Draven Zegler. And Rhodes was also named Most Valuable Player. Cooper Husband was received the Hustle Award, and Jose Salarin also earned the Golden Glove Award. Whereas the Pilots' extraordinary performance has brought immense pride to the LSU community, the city of Shreveport, and Caddo Parish, serving as an inspiration to athletes and fans alike. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the Caddo Parish Commission, that the commission hereby celebrates and commemorates the historic achievements of the 2025 LSU Pilots baseball team, recognizing their perfect season and national championship as a testament to excellence, perseverance, and teamwork. Be it further resolved that the commission extends its heartfelt congratulations to head coach Brad Neffendorf and the coaching staff, players, and all those who contributed to this remarkable season. Be it further resolved that this resolution will be made a part of the permanent records of Caddo Parish, and a copy of the resolution shall be presented at the LSU -- to the LSU Pilots baseball team."
Well, good afternoon. It's my pleasure, on behalf of LSU in Shreveport, to accept this resolution. I want to thank you for recognizing our players and our team, and what we've been able to do to bring positive recognition to Caddo Parish and to the city of Shreveport. And we're going to try to make a habit of this, so, you know, this week, just maybe LSU in Baton Rouge is going to win a national championship, and for NCAA Division One, and just maybe we'll do the same thing next year. But thank you so much for recognizing us, and I'll see if the coach wants to make a few remarks.
Absolutely.
Appreciate you guys having us here, and I'll follow up on him. Obviously, it was a remarkable year, but we had a remarkable group of guys. The support has been outstanding from the city, our university, and I think, you know, the main thing for us, obviously, we had not had a national title in school history in any athletic sports. As historic as our programs have been, it's that tough, and for what our guys to be able to do, and the fashion that they did it, with the type of guys that we had, was an unbelievable, you know, just year that went by insanely fast, because when you're that successful and having that much fun as a group, that's what happens. But I'm glad we were able to bring this, not only just to the university, but for the city, and I can't tell you how much we appreciate the consistent recognition that we've been getting, and once again, yeah, we'd love to continue to make it a habit. Obviously, it's insanely tough, but working hard at filling a roster again, and hopefully back in position to compete, to have another, you know, chance to win at a high level next year, as we have each and every year. But thank you again for having us out here. I can't tell you how much we appreciate it, and our guys do as well, even though they're not able to be here, because they're off doing all the other things that they're doing right now. But thank you guys very much. We appreciate it.
All right, Coach. Before you leave, we have several commissioners who are on the board, and we extend our congratulations again. There was some celebration last week, and we were grateful to be a part of it. We have Vice President Ken Epperson, Sr.
Good afternoon, all. And on behalf of myself, as well as all the constituents in Caddo Parish Commission, District 12, we commend you on that once-in-a-lifetime accolade of achieving that perfect record for that particular year. And as the coach and the chancellor stated, hopefully, it's habitual. However, I would also like to commend LSU and the staff for their work in the community. I chair the Veterans Celebration and Honor Committee, and you all have participated in our annual parade each year, your entire athletic staff, as well as a lot of your professors, such as Dr. Peter Siska. He's worked with us in the community. So you are a true partner, not only athletic and sports-wise, but also academic-wise in the community, and we applaud that. And anything that I or we can do in the near future to make sure that we enhance our particular relationship with LSU, please feel free to call upon myself, as well as this body, to do so. Is Ms. Erin Smith still at LSU? I dealt with her. I think she was in public relations.
Yes.
She's there?
Yes.
Okay. Well, give her my sentiments, and tell her I hope that we can continue our relationship, and may God bless LSU, and have a continuous bright future academically, as well as sports-wise. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Epperson. Commissioner John E. Atkins.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just wanted to join my colleagues in congratulating you all for this once-in-a-lifetime accomplishment. I represented -- or LSU was in District Nine for many years, but with changes, the recent restructuring, now Grace Ann Blake represents the campus, but I still consider you all part of District -- honorary members of District Nine, and it's nice to see y'all here today, and it's great that you all have set an example for the other LSU in their pursuit of a similar title. So thank you all, and congratulations for all your accomplishments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Commissioner Chris Crackman.
Thank you, Madam President. Oh, man. You know, our whole lives, playing ball and coaching ball, we tell everybody that there's no such thing as a perfect season, and, boy, did y'all set the bar high. And, you know, in all the games and introductions of all the players, what I noticed, what stuck out to me, was what a great representation of Caddo Parish the team was, or is, because of where they're from. There's so many players, you had players from Hawaii, players from Tennessee, Pennsylvania, and not to brag, but, you know, a player from more in sport, District One, Brendan Burns, which I'm very proud of, who actually played at the Blanchard Athletic Club, where I reside as president. But I've heard all the interviews and everything in between about the team and about, you know, such a perfect season, but if I could, as a coach and as an athletic club president, if I could ask the coach to come up, and if you had a word for youth players playing Little League or Dixie, or if you would, give us a word for those guys that are watching right now.
Tough one. Because there's so many different ways you could put it. I think the biggest thing, because, you know, my kid is eight right now, the biggest thing that I've noticed is, and everybody says it, just to have fun and don't get burnt out with it. I think youth sports is, there's so much emphasis on playing year-round and winning. And obviously, don't get me wrong, we want to win in everything that we do in life, but I've noticed a trend of, and I think it starts above them, a little bit with parents wanting it to happen a little bit more than them, and I think this would be towards the parents, the kids, and everybody is, don't push them to do anything they don't want to do. Support them, you know, be there and give them the opportunity to play if they want to, but it doesn't have to be year-round. Let them get involved in everything, but make sure they're having fun. You know, my kid wanted nothing to do with it last year, but the group of guys that we had this year is what encouraged him, and I'm not going to push him. Encouraged him to do it, and he put in more effort than I've ever seen without me having to push him to do it, and that's ultimately what I think you want. So as easy as it is to say, "Have fun," let them build up the investment level themselves over time, because it's going to change, obviously, as you get into high school, with limited sports that you'll be playing or whatnot, and you don't have to focus just on baseball, but focus on going out and competing, and having fun in athletics in general, and then let it kind of play its course out in regards to what you play, once you start getting into the higher levels. So that's what I would say.
I love that. Thank you. I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
No, you should.
But I appreciate it. I'm glad I did.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner Crackman. Commissioner Grace Ann Blake.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to tell a little story. I moved into District Eight, at one time District Nine, when, 38 years ago, when I graduated high school, I lived in the west side of town, and I moved to this district to go to college at LSU. So I've been seeing the praises of LSU pretty much my whole life. My son, right now, is a senior there, and it's just been wonderful watching the transformation all these years of LSU. But right now, what is occurring, it's just phenomenal to see the academics, and after doing the tour last year, the technology, the work with the veterans in this community, you're hitting all of the boxes. So I am not surprised that this was checked off as well. I mean, it just has absolutely been wonderful watching this happen. I am not athletic myself, but I do keep up enough with sports to know what's going on. I also know many ex-players from growing up and when I was in school there, and so I just am just so pleased and grateful to the recognition to Caddo Parish, the city of Shreveport, to the state, for all of these fine young men coming in from all over to choose this as their path to greatness in life. And I think that a lot of times, we hear so many stories, and we're missing the mark, and y'all are hitting the, well, that's no pun intended right there. You're hitting the mark with this. You have brought the beauty of what's happening in our community, and so I can't wait to see what's next, and how this continues, and the excitement around this team, and this sport, and the school. So thank y'all so much for taking the time to come here. I know that y'all have been busy. At every opportunity, people want to shake your hand and want to tell your story, not just in Louisiana, not our nation, but it's worldwide. It's pretty incredible stuff. So thank y'all so much for what each one of y'all are bringing to our community, and just know that we are here to help, and we see that this has been a path, and it didn't just happen. It was a lot of hard work with a lot of people. So thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Blake. Commissioner Roy Burrell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chancellor Smith, the coaches and team, I would like to congratulate you and LSU. I was at your reception when Dr. Tate introduced you to Shreveport. Now, I remember you mentioning something about the heat down here. It seemed like since you've been at LSU, you've been heating it up, and you hit the ground running, so you all keep up the good work. Our eyes are on you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. And Commissioner Burrell is the chair of the Granddaddy of All the Sickles Cell event that I talked to you about.
Yeah, y'all come out and play.
July 11 through 13. I made a request, if there are any players who are available to come out to meet some of the Sickles Cell patients, and the ones that are here, if they can get them here, they'll be there. So I'm going to make sure I give you my card. Thank you. Commissioner Ron Cothran.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to thank the, not only the baseball team, but the entire LSU staff, and most of all, coach, your family members as well, because, again, in your coaching, some things didn't get done, and I know that, as a father, as a husband, things of this nature, because, again, you spent a lot of time on the field, coaching, things of this nature. And the one thing I would share with everyone, we saw a perfect season, but those young men learnt more than a perfect game. They learnt each other, and I promise you, when they walk away from LSU with their degrees in hand, go on to major league, or whatever they're going to do, they have made a bond with some young men, and coaches, and staff members, that they will never, ever forget again. I thank you for everything that you all have done.
Thank you, Commissioner Cothran. Parliamentarian Victor Thomas.
Well, I think they've said everything that we can say, but as a former pilot, I just wanted to say congratulations to you guys again as well. Thank you.
Thank you. That will conclude our comments, and again, congratulations, and thank you for helping Caddo Parish become the destination location. All right.
The next visit that we have scheduled is from the Alzheimer's Association, and I believe you have received a copy of a flyer at your stations that is from Alzheimer's Association, and I believe--
We have Ms. Callaway, who is here.
Thank you, Madam President. As you all know, this is Alzheimer's Awareness Month. You can come on down, Ms. Callaway. And so Ms. Callaway did want to present some information to the citizens in our parish, just to bring awareness to this debilitating disease in our community.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, and special thanks to Commissioner Thomas for inviting me and giving me this opportunity to share about the Alzheimer's Association, and some facts and figures that we may not be aware of, as Alzheimer's is very prevalent, maybe more than we think. So again, my name is Renee Callaway. I'm the Walk Mander with Alzheimer's Association, and I want to share a little bit about how I got involved, and why this is personal to me. I lost my nanny in 2018, in part to dementia, and the last time I saw her, there was absolutely no recognition on her face as to who I was. When the recruiter for the Alzheimer's Association called and told me about this position, I saw a way that I could help make sure no granddaughter ever has to experience what I had experienced with my grandmother. So this is not just a job for me. This is a mission, and it is that mission that I bring, and I hope that passion that I bring to you today, to encourage you to get maybe more involved with Alzheimer's, and know what's going on in our community as it relates to Alzheimer's. Part of my job is to not only bring education and awareness, but to lead the charge in fundraising. Alzheimer's Association hosts the Walk Into Alzheimer's that takes place in more than three, or 600 communities across the nation. We are the largest private funder of research, care and support, and advocacy for Alzheimer's, for Alzheimer's, period. We have more than 50, no, let me back up, more than 1,000 projects in progress right now across 53 nations, and I am proud to say that we also supplied a grant of $130,000 to the Bridge last year to fund their respite care program. So not only are we working across the globe, across the country, we're working right here in our community. There are more than 94,000 Louisianans who have been diagnosed with Alzheimer's. Those are just who've been diagnosed. This doesn't include people who have not yet been to the doctor, who may be suffering with the disease, and have not received that diagnosis. In Bossier Parish, 23,000 people have been diagnosed, and Caddo Parish, more than 6,100. Caddo Parish ranks 14, ranks number seven in the state of prevalence. However, in communities with 10,000 people or more, age 65 or older, we're the second highest ranking in the state. So that is why we host the Walk Into Alzheimer's. This year, that walk is going to take place on October 18. It's going to be at the Louisiana Boardwalk, and this is considered one of the largest support groups that's out there. There are so many people, especially those caregivers, who don't seek out support groups because there's the stigma surrounding the disease, so they suffer in silence. But when they come to support the walk, and they are able to talk to other caregivers, they realize that they're not alone, and it actually emboldens them to seek the help and the care that they need, because caregiving for a person with Alzheimer's or dementia is a tremendous task, is huge, and it's a heavy burden to carry, because we love somebody so much, and we want to take care of that person. And so I would just want to encourage y'all to get involved. Let's raise the monies that we need to not only find the cure, but to see the advancements that we are seeing right now, the medications that are prolonging, that is, helping the progression of the disease take longer, that we're finding the blood test now, so we can find and diagnose Alzheimer's earlier, that was just approved just a month ago by the FDA. So the monies that we're raising is having an impact, and having a tremendous effect, and we can't do that without our communities gathering around and making the commitment to see that the end of Alzheimer's can be within our lifetime. With that, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Renee, so much for providing that information. I will, of course, this year, have another team. I really did enjoy participating last year. Thank you so much for having us. I hope that my colleagues will lace up their shoes and join me October 18 for our team, and hopefully, Madam Bryant, we can get, you know, our full staff to participate in a team from Caddo Parish this year. But thank you so much for providing that information.
Thank you so much for the opportunity, and I even want to go ahead and acknowledge Commissioner Thomas as being our 2026 Walk Chair, so thank you so much for your commitment to this cause.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Roy Burrell.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Callaway.
Ms. Callaway.
Ms. Callaway. No worries. We have several commissioners who are still on the board who have some comments, so just stick around for us for a few minutes.
Ms. Callaway. Appreciate you coming. I have a couple of questions. First of all, sometime I think I got old timers, but the difference between dementia and Alzheimer's is one of my questions, and the second one is, is there an increase, actual increase, in all of Alzheimer's diagnosis? Or it just, I mean, is there an increase in Alzheimer's patients than it has in prior year, or just more diagnosis?
So, first question. Dementia is the overall umbrella term for cognitive impairment. Alzheimer's is very specific, in which there are plaques that form on the brain that kills the nerve cells and actually causes the brain to atrophy or shrink. So there's multiple different types of dementia. Alzheimer's is just one of those. Now, as far as the second question, I think it's kind of like everything else, right? With the information that we're able to get out, bring more awareness and education, and encouraging people to seek help with their doctors if there's a concern with cognitive impairment, that will increase the number of diagnoses. So with that, our hope is that we can, again, get ahead of the disease and help our loved ones stay with us longer than what they would if they didn't get that diagnosis.
Well, the reason I was asking, when I was growing up, even going through college, you didn't hear a lot about Alzheimer's and dementia. As a matter of fact, I don't even hardly remember people in my community that you could point to, but now it seems to be so prevalent, that what is the change? Or is there a change? Is it diet, or is there any indicators?
So there are reports that have shown that our diet has a significant impact on Alzheimer's or dementia. So as we started eating more processed foods, the prevalence becomes more and more. Eating those organic foods, it has shown that there has been even some improvement with cognitive impairment.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Commissioner Ron Cothran.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, thank you for giving us this information today, and you clarified one of the questions that I had, difference between dementia and Alzheimer's. Thank you very much for that. The thing is also, what can we do as commissioners in our respective districts to assist our constituents? That's one question. And secondly, how can our constituents get in contact with you for questions, for assistance, for whatever the case might be? Can you share those numbers, emails as well, so they could hear it at this particular time?
Absolutely. So I think the biggest way to help is to get the word out. Bringing that awareness and education to our community is huge, right? The more we talk about it, the more the stigma goes away. So it is one of those things where people have just been maybe embarrassed, to say, you know what, Mama's not the way she used to be. But being able to say, look, there is a diagnosis, and there's some help, some hope in that, I think will help tremendously. In order to get in touch with me, very easy, my number is 318-209-7382. My email address is R.R.Mathews, M.A.T.H.E.W.S@ALZ.org, and I can, I'm happy to connect anybody who calls with the resources that they need.
Thank you. And my last question would be, do your organization, or do you come out to respective communities to actually enlighten people on dementia?
Absolutely, and we welcome those opportunities.
Okay. So all they need to do is just give you a call.
Please do.
For instance, if a community wanted to hear some things concerning individuals, they just give you a call and can get the information. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Cothran. Commissioner John E. Atkins.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for being here, and excuse my ignorance on this topic, but when, I think you mentioned earlier about the need to diagnose earlier, or the advantages of diagnosing earlier, can you talk to us a little bit about how one diagnoses, or how one tests for Alzheimer's, and why early detection may be beneficial?
Sure, absolutely. So we always encourage anybody who may have a concern to go to their primary physician first. There are other things that can mimic mild cognitive impairment, or the issues that come along with Alzheimer's. Vitamin deficiencies can mimic that disease. Medications can do the same thing. So the first step is talking to the primary care physician, and then if he feels that there is a more-- And then if he feels that there is a more in-depth issue, then there's going to be testing. And it's going to be more than what's today's date and who's the president. There should be a very involved cognitive test assessed and then scans, et cetera, that go along with it so that there can be an accurate diagnosis. And then if you wouldn't mind, give me the second part of your question.
The second part of the question was, what are the advantages of an early diagnosis? You know, as far as treatments are concerned?
Yeah, so we are so excited about the advances in science that we are currently seeing, the medications that have been approved by the FDA that help slow the progression of the disease. And the earlier that it can be caught, if that medication is going to be applicable to that person's situation, it just, it really does help slow that progression. So we get to keep our loved one longer instead of seeing that, that disease progress so quickly.
Flatten the decline.
Yes, sir.
And one last question, if I may, Madam.
Absolutely.
Are you seeing any, I've heard some, I've seen, heard some references to long COVID and to Alzheimer's and not, and some confusion about whether this person is being affected by one or the other. Is there a overlap between those conditions?
Unfortunately, I don't have that answer.
That's fair enough.
However, I can make some inquiries with our med-science group and get the answer for you.
No, you've done, you've done fine. I was just curious if you had any insights. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Vice President Ken Everson, Sr.
Is there any data that it appears to coincide with the diagnosis of Alzheimer's, dementia, and UTI? The reason that I ask is my mom, we thought that she was undergoing symptoms of Alzheimer's and went to several different places and they found out that it was UTI.
Yeah, so, and again, there are so many different things that can mimic the symptoms of Alzheimer's and dementia. And that's why we encourage people to seek help with their primary care physicians. So because sometimes UTI will also, you know, have some of that impairment, the cognitive impairment. And so it'll mimic the symptoms, but it's not necessarily dementia or Alzheimer's.
Thank you, Vice President Everson. Thank you so much for enlightening us today about this horrible disease. It affected me personally. My mother passed away with Alzheimer's. And so that is a death that you lose that parent twice. Because you lose the parent that you once knew and then you lose them again to the disease. Right now, I know that there's some very important legislation that we should all be lobbying for. And that is for the dementia care specialist program that is out there. So I would ask my colleagues, if you would, to please contact your state legislators as well as the governor's office and have them to sign their bill because it's very important to help those who are caregivers. So again, thank you for your mission.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Vice President Everson, were you back on the board? All right, that will conclude that. Next item, please, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, that brings us to a visit regarding Men's Mental Health Month.
All right.
I believe you should also have a, it's a blue colored handout related to this presentation.
We do. We have a presenter here.
Yes, Mr. Hanley. Madam President, as you know, June is Men's Mental Health Month. I definitely wanted to bring attention to a topic that is oftentimes stigmatized in our community. That's men's mental health. So thank you for being here with us today, Mr. Hanley.
Welcome.
So, I mean, all right, good morning. Well, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Haseem Jones and I'm a men's mental health advocate here in the city. I've been working with, in the therapeutic realm for the past 12 to 13 years. And I took a break from it, but it's something that I still am passionate about. Reason being is, first of all, I'm a man. And for far too long, I think we tell our young men, we tell our boys that they have to man up, they have to be tough, they have to exemplify all these characteristics of showing no emotion. And when they get older, they don't know how to properly demonstrate or really, I guess, pull out those emotions and speak to the emotions that they're really having. So I gave you all some information, just some quick information about men's mental health and some of the things that we're, we're dealing with. So just to say, one in five men experience a mental health issue every year. So what's a mental health issue? It's something that we all go through. Everybody up here has probably experienced something either. That's depression, that's anxiety, that's grief, stress, being overwhelmed. All those things are considered mental health issues. But what happens is, because of how we were groomed, how we were raised, we weren't necessarily taught how to navigate those emotions. So I think it's important to not just educate, but also demonstrate to our young men, our boys, and just our community, how to navigate some of those emotions. Because what happens is, those emotions don't just stay locked up inside of you. What happens, we, we see that the suicide rates amongst men are four times higher. We also see that, of course, violent crimes are committed most often by men. And that's because of a lot of the mental health issues, a lot of the, whatever, depression. It could be for that day that they're experiencing that they don't necessarily know how to deal with. So for men, what I really want to encourage you all to do, just amongst your, your families, amongst your friends, is to ask how they're doing. Check to see if you're okay. A lot of times, we just want to know that someone cares. So I think we, in, in the South, we're very hospitable and we always say, how you doing? But we really don't mean, we really mean just for you to tell me, okay, and let me go on about my business. So what I would encourage you to do for those men that you are close to, that you actually have a relationship with, reach out to them. And when you ask how they're doing, probe a little bit. What's going on with your family? You know, how are your kids? You know, have you gone to your doctor? We're, we're all of age, we should be going to the doctor. You know, have you gone to the doctors? Everything going all right? Now, I'm saying with your close friends, now what I, I always tell everyone that I work with, you need to have five people in your support system. So if you just imagine your hand, you ball it up and you're in the middle of it. You ball it up, those are supposed to be the people that help protect you, give you some safeguard. You got to have people that you can lean on and talk to about whatever issue you may be dealing with. It may be from finances, it may be with your relationship, it may be with your career. But all of those things combined, what they do is they weigh on you and they begin to weigh you down. And then you slip into a depression or you're anxious or you're stressed. And now you're cutting people off in traffic or now you're threatening people, you know, online or whatever the case may be. And it's just a slow tumble. And a lot of times, because we're not, we're all not professionals and we all have our own things going on, we never sit back and think about, I wonder how this young man's mental health is? We see the acting out, right? We can look on the internet all day. We can see all the acting out that's taking place. But what are those true reasons that these young men, young boys, older men are acting out in this way? So I'm hoping, just with the help of you all and bringing awareness and attention to just mental health and men's mental health in general, we can begin to kind of de-stigmatize the conversation. Because it's a touchy conversation, nobody wants to go there. You know, it's uncomfortable, it's personal. But that's why I say you got to have five people in your life that you depend, that you not necessarily depend on, but yeah, you depend on, they advocate for you and they hold you accountable, that you can go and talk to, that you can go express yourself to, that you can open yourself up and, and be vulnerable. And that's the main thing that I think a lot of men are really struggling with, that vulnerability. Because we've all been vulnerable with someone and our trust has been taken for granted or we've been abused in some type of way. But you have to have those five people. So some examples of who those five people can be in your life. I would always recommend therapy as one. Therapists, for the most part, they're paid to keep your secrets. Nobody wants to lose their license because I want to tell Roy Barrell what he, what he did 35,000 years ago, whatever.
You don't want, you don't want to know.
So have a therapist. Then you can also have a spiritual leader. Doesn't necessarily have to be a pastor, doesn't necessarily have to be a reverend or anything like that. But this can be someone that you can go and talk to and you advocate, and they can advocate to you just on a spiritual level. You also want to have someone that if it's 3:00 AM in the morning and you got a flat tire and you're stuck out, you can call them up and you know they'll get up out their bed and come and see about you. A lot of times, we, we would like to depend on our family, but we often know that if I tell my cousin, if I tell my brother, if I tell my uncle, now my aunties go nowhere, now grandmas go nowhere, and I don't want to tell them. So a lot of times, we find a little more soulless in our friends and our companions, some of our coworkers that we can depend on. So you want to find those five people in your life that you can reach out to and that you can often check in on and create a system of where we follow up and we check in. Be present. Men, when we deal with things, we isolate, right? We withdraw, we pull back, we don't want to open up. We don't want anyone to know where we're weak at. And to be honest with you, there's strength in communicating and talking about it. Because the goal is to navigate the emotion. When you stay stuck, when you stay quiet, what happens is you sulk. It festers, it grows. One loss now becomes a week worth of losing, which becomes a month worth of other issues, which becomes a year. And now you're just one year behind in your life when you could have talked to somebody, expressed yourself, and navigated that issue. So when, when you, when you think about your emotions, let's, let's look at it from this perspective. Nobody is always happy. Nobody's always sad. Nobody's always stressed. Nobody's always grieving. You're supposed to navigate those emotions. Emotions are nothing more than energy in motion. We don't stay stuck in them. You've never met a person that's happy 24/7. And you should meet a person that's sad 24/7. They don't know how to navigate those emotions properly. So asking the questions, open the door, be in a safe place. Many times, that's what we're looking for. We're looking for someone that we can speak to, that we can come and tell these secrets to that just won't share with the whole entire world, you know? So be that safe place, be that person that you need them to be for you. And then ask, ask, like, ask, hey, do you need some time to talk? When's the last time you called your best friend or called your buddy over just to come and hang out and watch the game? Or just maybe go grab something to eat and really have an authentic conversation? Stuff that's not surface level. For men, we like to talk about the surface stuff. Sports, women, cars, money stuff. But when we get below the surface, what's really going on with you and your, and your, and your, and your, and your, and your body, you know? Because stress shows up, right? If you have a friend that typically keeps his appearance up and now he's not, he could be going through something. If you have a friend that's typically on time and very timely for things and he, now he's forgetting, you know, he's just kind of, you know, not being his normal self, he could be going through things. The question to ask then is not to get on him and say, hey, man, you need to, you know, get it together. We've heard that our whole life. If I could get it together on my own, I would. You know, I wouldn't be feeling like this, I wouldn't be presenting myself like this. So I think the question that we now have to begin to ask our friends, our loved ones, is, are you okay? What's really going on? Is there anything that you need to talk about? Yesterday was Father Day. Many fathers were celebrated, many fathers were ignored. Unfortunately, I had a friend call me because he felt ignored. Now, the beauty in that is that he felt comfortable reaching out to me to talk about it. I'm talking about a 40-year-old grown man crying because he didn't feel acknowledged. He didn't feel appreciated from his family. If I wouldn't have been available, it's a Sunday, there's nobody else open. You know, you can't just go and talk to somebody on a Sunday. If I wouldn't have been available for him to, and to hold that safe space for him, I'll tell him what could have happened, you know? So we have these small victories, I consider that a small victory, that when I have a friend, someone that, that really trusts me with his information to call me and tell me those things, I know that I'm truly standing in the gap for other men that are around me. And I just encourage you all to do the same thing. Now, women, we can do the same, you can please ask us. We may not be honest with you all the time, but that means you may want to, you know, nudge your husband or nudge your friend to go and check in on your, hey, I don't know what's going on with, with, with my husband over here, but hey, can you please just call him and see what's going on? Because we probably won't be as transparent with you all because we don't want to appear to be weak. So this month of June, I just want to encourage you all to ask some questions, probe a little bit. And again, to not only advocate for yourselves, for other men, but for also other men around you. And just thank you for this opportunity to speak. I truly appreciate it, Madam Chair, and thank you also, Victor.
My mic isn't on. Thank you so much. We have a couple commissioners who are on the board for comments. The first one I have is Commissioner Roy Barrell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to welcome Haseem here. He's one of my good fraternity brothers. And I feel I've already gone through a session already, listening to what you're having to say. But by the way, I have a few patients for you right up here that I could probably recommend. We're talking about acting out.
I brought them for you.
But anyway, I was going to make a referral to you. I'm, I'm sure that you wouldn't mind that.
Yeah, we can find some resources for you.
All right.
If anybody on, if, if, and I know he's joking with y'all, but seriously, I think it's important that if, if there's anybody dealing with something, I can definitely get you some referrals.
We appreciate your passion and dedication to this service, wonderful presentation. Commissioner John E. Atkins.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Jones or is it Dr. Jones?
No, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Jones, I just wanted to compliment you on three things. I wanted to compliment you on your content and your mastery of the content. I wanted to compliment you on your communication style. And I wanted to compliment you on your connectivity. I can see why you've been successful in your profession. I hope, I may have heard that you say you've stepped back from it for a period of time.
Yes, sir.
But I'm sure you have been of great service to numerous people. And I encourage you, once you get your, your rest and, and refreshment, that you get back into the game because I'm sure you've helped many people over the years. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Commissioner Ron Carthor.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, wrote down several things here. Suicide, misnomer, okay? Quite often, for whatever reason, people are afraid to ask an individual if they're considering suicide. I wish you would kind of expound on that for a minute.
So which part would you like me to expound on? Just the, the, it being just so, so the thing about suicide, suicide is heavy, it's final, right? And a lot of us may not have the tools in order to support a person when they're dealing with something that could be so final. We've all on this panel dealt with grief, right? There's nothing that you can say, that anybody can say, to make you feel better when you're grieving someone. And unfortunately, people just try to say, hey, it's going to be all right. You're going to get through it. Time heals all. And these are the common things that we hear on a daily basis when it comes to helping people navigate some of those final moments that they're thinking about, contemplating, or experiencing. So when you, when you're talking about suicide, I think it's important to be present, right? Let's just be present. If you have, if you, if you suspect a friend, if you're suspecting someone of being, having a suicidal ideation, be present. And if you don't have the tools, then that's when you want to reach out. 911, we're going to call 911 and get you some help, even if you're not comfortable dealing or navigating that, that, with them. It's important to just be present because in the presence of someone, that can truly help them change the trajectory of what their thoughts are, right? Asking a question, maybe even trying to, trying to deflect the conversation to something that's just different. Because with these emotions, like I said, you got to navigate them. When you're thinking about, when you're thinking about suicide for anyone, that's not just, it's not the first time they did it. It's not the first time they had that thought. It's been an ongoing thing and they, they have, unfortunately, they, they navigated, but they continue to kind of circle back to it. So for those that are advocating and those that are just, just trying to stand in the gap or just, just be helpful to someone, it's important to be present. And if you don't feel like you have the tools to help them with it, call. Call 911, you know, immediately. And just stay there and be present until someone can actually come and help them.
Thank you. And I guess a caveat to that is that we should ask.
Yeah.
Nothing is wrong with asking a person if they are suicidal. The other thing I would ask is how does substance abuse heighten the mental health issues as well?
All right, so when we think about substance abuse, many a times, we, we look at people that are addicted as having, I guess, they don't have the ability to cope with whatever is going on in their life. Nobody wakes up an alcoholic. We may have those with genes, nobody wakes up a drug addict, nobody wakes up a gambling addict, nobody wakes up a sex addict, nobody wakes up any kind of addict. What happens is, we have these issues that's going on inside of us. I'm depressed, I'm tired of feeling this way, I want to numb it. I go to whatever my vice is. It could be anything. Whatever my vice is, this vice helps me release the dopamine in my brain to make me feel better so I'm not thinking about being depressed. But what happens when we look at any addiction? But what happens when we look at any addiction, even with the opioid crisis that we've been experiencing, they, they're trying to run away from the pain, but they're not fixing the root of the issue. The root of the issue is that you're depressed. You're depressed because you lost your job. You know, your family's in shambles. You know, and that's nothing that I can fix, you can fix, or anybody can fix. But they have to take a series of positive steps in the same direction in order to address that. And sometimes it takes medication. But we have a stigma associated around medicating ourselves for those type of, you know, ailments. So, um, when it comes to addiction, it's, it's something I hope that we can, in our culture, we can become a little bit more, um, gracious. You know, give them a little bit more grace. Because they didn't wake up and choose to be drug addicts. There's life that happened to them. There's things that they experienced, and things that they saw, and they decided to go to these things in order to numb a pain. We've done it in some kind of way. Either we've all overate. You know, we've all maybe drank a little bit too much. We might not even been dealing with anything. We could have just been celebrating. But we went overboard. And when the brain releases that dopamine, what happens is, we see that this feels good. And if you can look at me, I found some food that feels good when I eat it, right? So, because of that, I go back to it, right? And I want to continue to feel that way because feeling this way over here is just, I can't identify it. I don't know what it is. And that's another issue. We don't know. We just don't have the education to realize what the difference of, what, what, what anxiety is. What are some of the symptoms of being anxious? Why can't I focus on my work? Why can't I get, get good rest? Why am I irritable? Why am I yelling at my kids? We, we, we don't look at it as, maybe I'm anxious. Maybe I'm depressed. I got this bill coming up. I'm two months behind on this bill, and they're about to come take my car. If they take my car, I can't go to work. Can't go to work. I can't provide. I'm gonna lose everything. Bottle is $20 around the corner. Sip on this thing, get a, it's kind of, all right, now I can figure it out. But every day, a bottle around the corner is $20, $10. So, we have to learn to kind of dig a little bit deeper and get to the root of those issues and hopefully find some services that they can use, like Alcohol Anonymous and Drug Anonymous, so on and so forth. And, but finding the resources that they need in order to cope and deal with life's issues.
And my, my last question would be, uh, how does an individual, uh, that's maybe looking, uh, hearing, um, a meeting at this time, how would they get in contact with you?
So, for me, if you're getting in contact with me, what I'm going to do is refer you. One of my, my referral sources is, uh, Clint Davis Counseling. That's, that's a counseling agency I really, uh, believe in. Clint Davis does an amazing job just working, uh, in the community. Another, uh, agency that, uh, uh, I have some other referral sources with Jessica Latton. Uh, she's a really good, um, Charles Johnson, he's a male therapist for, for some of the men out there. Um, but there's, 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 there's resources. If we go on, uh, I guess counselor, counselors today, uh, you can, you can find some of the local therapists in, in your, in your community. And it's, it's important to reach out to them. But we're here, you know? They're here, they're ready to help. They're trying to help. They want to help. They want to be here for you and their services to help you, uh, even if you're insurance. Some, some of us, we all have insurance. Some of, sometimes our insurance even pay for us to go to, to, to therapy. But we have to go to HR and ask, what, you know, what does this cover? So we can see how many sessions it pays for. So, there's, there's help out there.
Again, thank you for being here today and thank you for expounding on the mental health issues.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And I just wanted to add, I know that you mentioned 911, but the 988 Lifeline number is also another number that you can use for non-emergency.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Stefan Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, thank you, Mr. Jones, for being here. Um, I'll be transparent. There was a time that I called Mr. Jones myself and was having a really, really, really bad day. And, uh, he was there, he stepped in, and he made some suggestions for me to get the help that I needed. Called him because I was comfortable. We went to school together. Um, and he's just been a great, upstanding young man. Met him in church. It was uncomfortable for me to call him because of myself, not because of him. But because I had grown up in church my whole life. And I heard a lot of this stuff. It'll be all right after a while. You'll get through it. The storm will pass over. Yeah, it will, but what am I gonna do while I'm in the storm? And so, I had to get past, um, being a man of faith, being a man of God, but also understanding I needed a therapist as well. And so, uh, even if you're in the spiritual realm, it's okay to get a therapist. That does not mean you love Jesus less. Um, that means that you're using the common sense that he blessed you with to do something with yourself. It's, we just can't depend on the parables alone. There are some practical things, uh, in our walk with God that allows us to seek the help that we need. And, you know, even when David was dealing with some things, he had a friend in Jonathan, you know? And so, uh, we have to be able to, to deal with that. One thing that I will share, that he shared with me, was to journal. Um, and so, I went and bought me a composition notebook, and I'd write in it every day, whatever came to my mind. And a lot of those thoughts, once I put them on paper, I was able to release that. Even if I didn't tell anybody, I was able to release it from my mind, just to get it out. And it kind of helped me a whole lot. And I realized a lot of the things that he was saying, you know, why am I yelling at my kids? Why am I, you know, on the edge all the time? You know, I was dealing with some things that I didn't realize I had. And so, um, I shared that because I felt like it might help somebody else who may have a lot of pride and not want to, you know, really deal with their issues. We all have bad days, um, and we need to realize and give people grace to have their bad days. Uh, but also be able to check on it. And so, um, you know, not to, to put all my business out there, but, you know, I had a bad day and, and I reached out to a friend, and we all have them. It's okay to do it. So, hopefully, somebody's watching and can hear my testimony, um, and you can be saved from that, uh, whatever it is that you're dealing with. Especially those of us, those of us who are in church, who have always dealt with that stigma because we're people of faith, that we shouldn't be going to therapy. You know, uh, you know, I believe God heals, but I also think you should take your medicine for diabetes as well.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So, you know, be practical and be real with yourself, uh, and get the help that you need. And so, um, if there's anybody listening, especially, uh, if you have my number, please call Commissioner Jones, and I'll be glad to talk with you about what helped me, um, and direct you to, uh, some resources as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones, for your transparency. Great point. Commissioner John Paul Young.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you so much for being here. It's been a very informative and helpful talk. I wonder if you could, um, share with us and the public if you, uh, have any views about, um, the role that physical activity and exercise could help play in improving mental health for men?
Yeah, so, so absolutely. Um, there, there's a few things that we can all do on our own to address our own mental health, like Stefan was alluding to with the journal. And there's, there's a voice that we have in our head, even as you sit quiet, that you hear. And it doesn't turn off, right? And because of that, you begin to believe the things that you think to yourself. They become fact. You only begin to question those things when you speak about it. So, when you journal, it's an opportunity to express it and get it out there. And have y'all ever thought something in your head, wrote it, about to send it, and immediately said, that don't make no sense, right? We've all done it. Because we, we, we'll validate ourselves. Our brains, you know, is supposed to really, uh, is to, to keep us feeling comfortable. So, whatever you think, your brain will allow you to, to, to believe. So with physical therapy, well, not physical therapy, but with physical exercise, what that does, it allows you to move your body and to also release some of that dopamine, right? That dopamine is released when you move. It's a chemical in the brain. It's a feel-good chemical. When you release that dopamine, you begin to think a little bit clearer. You got, you're a little more optimistic about what's taking place in your life. So, physical exercise, even if we're, if we're just gonna walk, that's totally fine. Walk. If you want to go to the gym, that's totally fine, but you need to move. And then the sun also. So the sun adds vitamin D, releases, you know, gives us vitamin D, and that also is a boost booster. So, getting outside and moving can be beneficial. Journaling also can be beneficial. Talking to your, to your therapist also can be beneficial. Taking your medication, all these things together. When you think about mental health, it's not just one approach, right? We're all onions, meaning we got different layers. So you can't just do one thing to fix everything that's going on in your life. It's going to take a holistic approach so that you can be at your most optimal, right? The goal is not to, to get it right 100% of the time, but it's to try to be the best version of myself every single day. The best version on yourself tomorrow may just be 60%, because y'all up here listening to me all day, right? But the next day, it may be 85%. Whatever your best version is of yourself, recognize that. Move a little bit, go to the gym, talk to some of your friends, journal, go to therapy, show up, be present, look yourself in the mirror, ask you some questions, and show up the best version of yourself that you can that day.
Thank you so much. And I'll just add, um, one, one more, uh, thing that I often do for my mental health, which is to, uh, and I see one of my co-gardeners in the audience, um, is I love to spend time in my garden and in nature, soaking up vitamin D from the sun and admiring God's creation, uh, which works whether we want it to or not, and it's a very inspiring way to, uh, rebalance yourself.
So to add to that, and I'm, I'm not gonna keep holding y'all, but to add to that, whenever you can focus yourself, focus your mind on something that's outside of you, that's when you can begin to settle some of your thoughts. So that's why we fish, right? Many of us like fishing. We, we hunt, right? We go to ball games. You know, we go get haircuts, we get, you know, facials, your feet manicured, so on and so forth. We do all these things to focus on something that's outside of me. When you're in nature, you're connecting to, to, to just the earth and everything that God made for us, and it's an opportunity to observe. So even if things are not going well in your life, personally, what you can observe is that, man, that's a beautiful flower. I've never seen that. Man, look at that. You ever heard that sound? What bird was that? It's little things like that that you have to practice on a daily basis to address your mental health. It has to be something that you practice on a daily basis, just like if we, if, if, if you go to the gym one month, and then you skip a month, you'll be right back where you started, if not worse, you know? So you have to do it on a daily basis and consistent in order to truly change what's going on in your life. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jones, uh, again, for your presentation and your service. May God continue to bless and keep you, is my prayer.
All right. Thank you all. You have a good one.
Mr. Clerk, at this time, the Chair would like to make a motion to adopt the regular session minutes and global and adopt all special resolutions and the presentation for Mr. Terrence "Abebe" Stewart.
Thank you. And while you, uh, consider that motion, I will just mention, I believe there is one other, um, uh, special resolution to be presented today as well during that section. And I believe that's the one for basic necessities.
We'll do that one second. Thank you. All right, I see no discussion. Please vote.
Okay, and that motion passes unanimously with 12 votes in support and none in opposition. Uh, would you like me to, uh, start with the resolution for, um, uh, for Babebe or for?
Babebe, please.
Okay. Great.
If you would, at this time, please stand.
And if?
Mr. Terrence Stewart, would you please come down?
Mr. Stewart would make his way to the front. I'll begin to read this into the record and, um, Commissioner Gage Watts, I do have a copy of this for you, if you would like, uh, to take this copy. And it reads, this is a special resolution of recognition for Terrence "Abebe" Stewart. And it reads, whereas Black Music Month is a time of national reflection and celebration of the profound cultural, historical, and artistic contributions of black musicians, creators, and leaders whose work has shaped American music and inspired generations across the globe. And whereas Terrence Stewart, known, known to the world as Abebe, Hollywood Babebe, or simply Babebe, is one such visionary whose influence and contributions have helped define and elevate Southern hip-hop, urban radio, and black culture for nearly two decades. And whereas a native son of Louisiana, Babebe rose to prominence from the local airwaves of Shreveport's 103.7 The Beat, where he connected deeply with the community and became a beloved personality, before expanding his influence to Dallas's K-104 FM, where his drive-time program became one of the top-rated in the country. And whereas Babebe was immortalized in 2007 with the platinum-certified hit Abebe by Hurricane Chris, which catapulted him to national recognition and sparked a journey that would span radio, music production, artist development, fashion, film, and community leadership. And whereas through his leadership at Anwet Entertainment and his innate ability to serve as a doc connector, Babebe has worked with an extensive roster of influential artists, including 50 Cent, Master P, Nelly, Nipsey Hussle, T-Pain, Rick Ross, Kevin Gates, Megan Thee Stallion, Rod Wave, Frito Bangs, Doro, Little Boosie, Young Dolph, Jim Jones, Yo Gotti, Future, DaBaby, uh, Deon Sanders, Shador and Silo Sanders, the Dallas Cowboys, Dez Bryant, the New Dallas Movement featuring Montana 700, Zillionaire Doe, Hadonjo Amir, and many others, shaping the sound and spirit of modern hip-hop and entertainment culture. And whereas Babebe's influence reaches beyond music encompassing entrepreneurship with his culturally-inspired clothing line, Get Home Safe, his forays, his forays into acting also show he's a creative force in front of and behind the camera or microphone, and all this while retaining his deep commitment to community empowerment, social uplift, and devotion to family as a loyal husband and father embodying leadership, integrity, and purpose. And whereas in recognition of his exceptional contributions to the business of entertainment, Babebe was awarded an honorary doctorate in entertainment business in 2023, further affirming his status as a pioneering cultural curator and advocate for the next generation of creatives. Whereas rooted in rhythm, authenticity, and leadership from his days as a drum major and dance committee member at Grambling State University, Babebe continues to serve as a bridge builder and beacon for artistic integrity, creative excellence, and cultural advancement. And whereas the Caddo Parish Commission wishes to recognize Terrence Stewart's enduring legacy, his inspirational journey from local talent to national icon, and his ongoing commitment to empowering others through music, media, and community building. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Caddo Parish Commission, meeting in legal and regular session the 16th day of June 2025, that it does hereby proclaim June 19th, 2025, as Abebe Day and Caddo Parish, Louisiana, in honor and recognition of Terrence "Abebe" Stewart for his visionary leadership, cultural impact, and outstanding contributions to the world of music and entertainment, and expresses its deep appreciation for his continued representation of the spirit and creative brilliance of Caddo Parish and the greater Louisiana community, and it urges all citizens to join with the parish in recognition of this important day.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
You may be seated. I'm gonna, well, I'm gonna let, um, Commissioner Thomas go first. Want me to go first? Okay. All right. I'll go first. Um, I would just like to say that today, that we celebrate not just a name, but a movement. Um, I've known Babebe all of our entire lives, um, and he is a young man from the Moretown community. And anything great come from Moretown, you say, I say, yes, it is. You have poured over three decades into elevating Southern sound, community voices, and cultural storytelling from the orange minivan to the streets, to the studios, from Louisiana to Dallas, Mr. I-20. You have been a visionary, a connector, and an unstoppable creative force. This recognition is well-earned and is overdue. I want to say congratulations, Babebe, and thank you for making the culture louder, prouder, and more united. We are proud of you, and I know it's nothing like being honored in your hometown of Caddo Parish. We love you and we appreciate you. And to my beautiful sister, Ms. Nikki Baby. Hey! Just want to say congratulations to you too, because this is a testament, behind every good man, there is a greater woman. I have, yes. I have Commissioner Victor L. Thomas, Parliamentarian Thomas, who would like to have some comments as well.
Thank you, Madam President. I want you to get that out the way, because I really want to egg him on and get him to turn us up. But not in the chambers. But, um, I just wanted to say congratulations to you, sir. Um, I'm hold, trying to hold myself, because I know you'll get us there. Uh, but we're gonna celebrate Abebe, Abebe real soon. Um, I just want to, um, applaud you on your commitment to community service. Um, all these accolades, um, all these celebrities, one of the things that I've always seen you do is make sure that you bring that back home, that you, um, let them know about Shreveport and that you put Shreveport on the map, um, and that you make sure that they invest in Shreveport as well. So, thank you for that. Keep continuing to do that. Um, people are watching. People do pay attention to the works that you're doing. Um, the culture is appreciative of you, um, not just Caddo Parish. So, wanted to say thank you and congratulations.
Thank you. Commissioner Roy Barriel.
Abebe. Now, Babebe and I, we go back a long time. We're very good friends over, over the years. I've seen him really promote our area when everybody else was down on it. And, um, all I can, all I can say is like the, the Chair lady said. say is like the Chair lady said, this recognition is well overdue. And glad to have you back home every chance you get. I know you're out of town, but I run across you ever so often. I don't run in the same crowd anymore, but I do try to, when your name come up, I do try to find you. So again, congratulations.
You don't have to tell it all, Commissioner Barrell. It's okay if you see him sometimes in those paths. Vice President Ken Efferson, senior.
Abebe, before the meeting started, I met a young lady in a green dress back there with the white ribbon, and I say, what, what are you gonna work on today? She said, I'm down here for my pawpaw. Let Abebe come up and stand next to her pawpaw. Come on.
And if the entire family, please stand so that we can acknowledge you as well.
Before I close, I'd just like to state that on my teleconference show last Thursday, I had an individual from Caddo Parish that, graduate of Southern University-
All right.
-and moved, his first job was in Akron, Ohio, Good Year Company, and he's recently retired in 2017, having a construction company and electrical company, had total sales of $90 million annually from Caddo Parish. Not only that gentleman, Mr. Lonnie Mouse, Mr. Abebe, and a lot of other good things emanate and come from Caddo Parish. And we appreciate you, and we always want to recognize you. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you, Vice President Efferson. Commissioner Stefan Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. Abebe is a part of the soundtrack of my life growing up. Funny story, I was working for Comcast Cable, and he had cable issues at the house, and I just so happened to be the technician. I never knew Abebe's government name, so I'm like, Terrence Stewart. So I just pull up to the house I'm working, and his wife was like, he's on the phone, he can tell you exactly what's wrong with it. And I'm like, hey, I'm the cable guy. Yeah, this is Abebe. I'm like, oh, this is awesome. That felt like a huge moment for me, because, I mean, he was a celebrity to us growing up in the community, and so just a part of the culture and understanding, you know, how we do it, where we're from, you know? Growing up in Cedar Grove, it's great to have a representation, especially on the radio and the culture and mainstream, they can put on for the city. And I love when I go to Texas and I hear people brag about him, and I'm like, that's our guy. He's from Shreveport. And so, you know, y'all are reaping the benefits of where we've grown up with our entire lives. So I'm just, it's probably just a full-circum moment. We just had Yoshi down a couple of weeks, man. This is just awesome, to, you know, to be able to recognize you guys are sitting in this seat. And I just want to remind all of my colleagues and friends of the chamber that great things come from exit 81. You know, I know y'all like to brag about Baton Rouge, but great things come from exit 81. And I digress. Thank you.
Wow, wow, that isn't Jermaine.
It is definitely Jermaine. Commissioner Grace Ann Blake.
Thank you, Madam President. Abebe, you were one of the first persons that I met when I became a commissioner, and I was super excited. And I just want to say how proud I am that we have such a diverse, wonderful culture, and congratulations. And I love your initiative of what you've been doing for the community. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you. All right, the floor is yours, Mr. Stewart.
As I was sitting there listening, I was like, who are y'all talking about? Now, good evening. Thank you, I am overwhelmed. I've been a lot of places, but to be recognized from your hometown, yeah, that's big. That's big. It ain't even about me. I was just living life, you feel me? I didn't have a vision. And I didn't get here by myself. I got a big sister back there, Donna Taylor. I got a big brother back there, E.T. Bubba Gump, Taylor. They protected me when I was little, you know? And I was going around doing interviews, and I was telling them like, you know, we kind of always attach ourselves to trauma. I found myself doing an interview one day, and I was like, trauma bonding with people, the struggle. And I caught myself, and I was like, man, you lying. Out of all the kids, you was the only one that went to private school. Everybody else went to public school. And then I realized that I wasn't as bad off, and from that moment on, I started just accepting who I really were. Again, when I started, I wasn't doing anything, but as I started seeing the impact that I had on people, because I never met a stranger, I started finding my purpose. And the purpose was to empower, connect, and inspire. My Anwet family is back here, a bunch of young brothers, DJ Chico, 3-Fee, Yoshi, Jabba Charles. And if I could tell any young entrepreneur, be you, pay attention. You can learn a lot by just paying attention. I watched people that go before me, I watched how they moved, and I watched what they did good, and I watched they did not so good. And I said that if I ever embodied a full body of influence, that I would always bring it back to Shreveport. How high could God take you before He lose you? And I'm still standing on Shreveport. That's what it's all about. It's not about the birth date, it's not about the expiration, it's about that dash in the middle. The dash in the middle is what I really stand on, like, how you gonna remember Abebe long after he's gone? And I used to say, well, I'm not gonna get them flowers while I'm living. It'll be long after I'm gone that you'll get the fertilizer and the flowers, and they'll talk about how great you impacted people's lives. But the devil is a liar.
Amen.
I'm right here before Shreveport, Louisiana, and this is big for me. So it ain't about me, it's about the people that came before me, and the impact that will happen to people after me. So thank y'all, thank my beautiful wife, my kids in the back, and you know, we're gonna let the whole world know Abebe. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Clerk. Our next presentation.
All right, the next presentation that I have is for Basic Necessities, and I do have a copy of that-
If you would, please stand.
Presentation as well, if any commissioners that may want to make their way down as the Basic Necessities group makes their way to the podium, I'll read it into the record. This is a special resolution of recognition for Basic Necessities on their fifth anniversary. Whereas Basic Necessities, a certified national diaper bank organization founded in 2020, has been a cornerstone of support for low-income families across Northwest Louisiana by addressing the critical issue of hygiene insecurity. Whereas the organization has distributed more than 1 million essential hygiene supplies, including diapers, period products, incontinence items, and personal care necessities to over 7,500 families and individuals across the Ark-La-Tex region, with 82% of those served residing in Caddo Parish, including 3,500 Caddo Parish households. And whereas Basic Necessities partners with nine local organizations, including the Hub, the Caddo Parish Health Unit, and the Housing Authority of the City of Shreveport, and operates 19 service areas, including a new satellite location in East Carroll Parish, to ensure equitable access to dignity-enhancing resources. And whereas the organization plays a pivotal role in maternal and child health, providing postpartum care items and infant supplies to alleviate maternal stress, reduce preventable health risks, and support healthy early childhood development. And whereas Basic Necessities engages in impactful advocacy efforts, including public education campaigns and policy initiatives aimed at limiting the cost of hygiene products, expanding critical assistance programs, and promoting hygiene equity as a fundamental human right. And whereas the organization has not only transformed access to basic needs for the underserved, but also fostered confidence, inclusion, and long-term systemic change within the community. And whereas in celebrating its fifth anniversary in 2025, Basic Necessities stands as a model of compassionate leadership, responsive service, and a catalyst for lasting social progress in Caddo Parish and beyond. Now therefore be it resolved by the Caddo Parish Commission that it does hereby recognize and commend Basic Necessities for its outstanding contributions to the health, dignity, and well-being of the residents of Caddo Parish. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be provided to Basic Necessities as a token of the Commission's gratitude and continued support.
You may be seated. Welcome. Are there any commissioners? Ms. Blake, are you on the board, or was this from the last? Okay. John Paul.
Thank you both so much for being here to accept the resolution. As you know, I've been supporting Basic Necessities since y'all got started, and it's just a couple blocks from my house. I'm really proud that you work so hard to help people with needs that they have that they're often ashamed to ask for. Some of the most vulnerable people, young mothers, women and children, who need help and often have nowhere else to turn, and it's a real blessing that you do that work, even though it's not glamorous, it is glorious. So we want to all thank you and salute the hard work you do to help give you the energy and the impetus and the momentum to keep doing it. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Victor Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Yes, once again, congratulations on five years. I've worked with this group for many years, and a lot of times, they have more resources than people even know about, and that they can even get out to people. This is something that I really hope a lot of people take advantage of. I don't have any kids, but I can only imagine not being able to provide formula and diapers and wipes for my child, but what you guys do is a services community that I think is very, very much needed. Thank you all for that. Of course, we've talked about the struggles that you guys have had getting out into the community, and just to see the way you flourish, the impact that you have made in such a short amount of time, I think should be applauded, and I want to congratulate you guys on five years. Thank you.
Commissioner Barrell. Thank you. I would like to congratulate you too, especially when you said East Carroll, I'm from West Carroll.
All right.
And that is a very, very impoverished area, and it would be a great benefit for you all to be in that area. And anything I can do, let me know. Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, Vice President. I just want to say thank y'all for coming. I don't know much about your organization, but I look forward to learning more about it, and would like to share my contact, that if my salon can be of any help to spread information, I would like to partner with y'all and help. Thank you for what you're doing.
See no one else. Ladies, anything you'd like to share with us?
I would just like to say thank you to the Commission.
Come up a little closer and pull the mic to you, please, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
Just pull it.
I would just like to say thank you to all of you. You've been a huge supporter of our organization, like some of you said, since the beginning, since we started in 2020 during the pandemic. When I took over in January of last year, we had run out of funding, the previous owner or the previous directors were also the founders, and they were just tired of volunteering and, you know, ready to move on to other projects. I took it under, like, as a small project, or what I thought was a small project, and it has just, it's flourished, it has blossomed, and we are growing. And we are really appreciative of the support that you all have given us this year to really get us off the ground again, and helping us accomplish some of these things. So thank you.
The young lady, would you like to share something?
I don't have nothing to say, y'all. Really everything that she said, but thank y'all for allowing us to be here today.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your support to this community and beyond. All right, Mr. Clerk. Grace Ann, are you on the board? Commissioner Blake?
She spoke.
You already spoke, okay.
Okay, that brings us, let's see, that brings us now to the second round, I'm sorry, Communicating Committee reports.
All right. All right, I have Commissioner John Paul Young.
Thank you, Madam President. Relating to the great work that the Highland Center does, I just wanted to remind everyone, if they would like to attend the ribbon cutting for the Community Lighthouse Project that's going online there, it is June 26th at 5:00 p.m. And everyone is also invited to stay for the fantastic community meal that they do for everyone in the community, not just the needy, but it's largely people who need the help of the Highland Center, and that starts at 5:30, June 26th at 5:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Grace Ann Blake.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to share a recognition for, I was driving home from being out of town this weekend and stopped to eat dinner at a place in Baton Rouge and got to watch the U.S. Open, and it was wonderful to see Sam Burns and Philip Barbary from here, and follow in the footsteps of Hal Sutton and David Toms. And I also would like to congratulate Chasing Aces. Today is their grand opening, and so this is a real huge win for our community, for Shreveport, to be able to cross the river to next-level entertainment and fun for our community. So looking forward to that experience. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner Blake. Parliamentarian Victor Thomas.
Thank you, Madam President. I've got a lot, because, you know, they say there's nothing going on in Shreveport, and that there's nothing to do in Shreveport. But this, I do know that this is our only meeting for June, so I want to share some really important communiques. This morning, like Commissioner Blake just mentioned, I did have a chance to attend the ribbon cutting for Chasing Aces. I know it's directly across the river, but that does contribute to our destination. What do you call it, Madam President?
It is the destination location.
That's right. I think that's really gonna be really great for our area. It was an amazing facility, amazing activities. Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Crackman, they have a batting cage that I think y'all are gonna enjoy. It's really, really cool. Yes, it's gonna be so amazing over there. But I did want to announce the Juneteenth Day of Service that's gonna be going on this Saturday. This is in conjunction with Shreveport Green and the Power Coalition. I, myself, will be downtown. It's gonna be this Saturday from 8:00 to 12:00 p.m. That's gonna be at the Shreveport Green Urban Farm, 1034 Sprague Street. You are more than welcome to come out and help us do a day of service there. This weekend, I'm only gonna tap on it, but I'm gonna let Madam President talk about it. The Good Times Road Festival will be kicking off for June 20th through the 22nd at Festival Plaza. Also, this Saturday, downtown Shreveport, the ladies of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority will be having a jazz brunch, which goes to benefit scholarships. Not only that, the Stoner Hill Neighborhood Association will be having its meeting on June the 23rd from 5:30 p.m. The reason why I make sure to mention that all the time, this is a very important meeting. All of you who grew up in the Stoner Hill neighborhood, they will be talking and sharing some information regarding the Stoner Hill Reunion that will be happening mid-July. Also, on Thursday, if you're looking for something to celebrate Juneteenth, there will be a food truck night presented by the Shreveport Bozer African-American Chamber of Commerce that will be at Louisiana Daiquiri Cafe from 5:00 to 10:00. I also would like to announce that the Southern University National Alumni Association has chosen to use Shreveport to host their annual conference that's gonna be going on between the 26th and the 29th. Once again, the Southern University National Alumni Conference for my Grambling Nights here on the panel. We love you all as well, and you are more than welcome to attend. Not only that, on June the 28th, the Robbies, which is an event to benefit the Robinson Film Center, will be held June 28th at 7:00 p.m. I encourage you all to please patronize this event. The funds raised for this go to help the programming throughout the year at the Robinson Film Theater. As you know, they do a lot of film education with our youth. Not only that, the Shran Theater has announced their 41st season, and this year, the Shran has a very special birthday. They're celebrating 100 years, built in 1925. I did share with my colleagues some of the information from the opening night. They have some really great shows that are gonna be coming out this year, some- some really great events that are going to be going. We've been invited to the birthday celebration as well as the 100 Years Gala, so I hope that you all will be able to attend. I do think that is all, but if not, then y'all know I'll be back on in the second round. Thank y'all so much. Once again, they say there's nothing to do in Shreveport, but I beg to differ, and I'm going to always make sure that y'all are aware. Thank you, Mr. President.
Commissioner Carleton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, just like to acknowledge two things. This past Saturday, the Nine Fitness Open had a ribbon cutting on Mansfield Road. It's really a very wonderful fitness center, and if you get an opportunity, please go by. They're giving some seven-day free memberships as well. If you get a chance to go there, and I really like the running tractors upstairs. The other thing I would like to share as well is that I had an opportunity to receive a call from a constituent that didn't know what to do, that was being harassed, that was really having some problems with a next-door neighbor. And I called the Shreveport Police Department. I just wanted to publicly acknowledge my thanks to them because, again, they was able to take care of the matter and the citizen, even though it's not in the most comfortable situation right now. But, again, he is relieved at this particular time. And publicly, I just wanted to thank Shreveport Police Department.
Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I recently had the opportunity to be a judge at Biz Camp last week. If you're not familiar with that, it's a program that fosters relationships with young teens who are looking to become entrepreneurs. Even if they're not, by the time that they get done with this camp, their mindset is completely changed. And I was able to sit in front of young people who had outstanding presentations, giving their sales pitch to us judges for the business that they had started. And I just really was blown away by some of the presentations, just the energy and confidence that some of them walked in the room with, a firm handshake, looking you in the eye, making sure that they spoke well, that they took their time. It was just, it was very inspiring to see. It was very encouraging to see. You know, we talk about all the young people that are doing the bad things all the time. That's usually what's on the front page of the paper. But these young people are focused, and they're going to be the future leaders of our parish. And so I just wanted to highlight the Biz Camp. Really had an awesome time. It wasn't my first year judging, and it gets better every time. And it won't be my last. I'll be willing to be a volunteer to judge at any time. So thank you, Commissioner Burrell, for making sure that I was aware of that. And they're excellent hosts, you know. Also, shout out to G-Unit, who partnered with them this year. We were able to meet Mr. Orville and have conversations with him as well. He sat in on the presentations and gave a few tips to help the young people out. And, you know, that's what it's all about, making sure we prepare the next generation to take our place. And so I saw a lot of great things over there on Line Avenue last week, and I hope to see more in the future. And I'll have my soon-to-be 13-year-old participating in Biz Camp next year. So all these great ideas that he's trying to get me to fund right now. He loves spending my money. We can get him over to a Biz Camp and see if we can get some structure to it so he can start making him some money. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Vice President Ken Everson, Senior?
Yes, ma'am. The Veterans Celebration Committee will hold our monthly meeting this Thursday, June 18th, 11:00 a.m. at Louisiana State Fairgrounds. We normally meet in the Roundup Room. However, there's an event there, so we'll meet in the Agriculture Building.
Commissioner Everson, I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure, to correct it. I think you accidentally said Thursday. It's Wednesday, the 18th.
Wednesday, June 18th. Wednesday, June 18th, 11:00 a.m., Louisiana State Fairgrounds. Instead of meeting in the Roundup Room, we'll be in the Agriculture Building, which is directly diagonally across. And also, our chaplain of the Veterans Celebration Committee, which many of us know, she's very active in a lot of organizations and in the community, Ms. Joyce Rogers. She is pretty ill. She's been hospitalized in intensive care since June the 2nd. And we're asking that all of our members and all the persons that know her, please send a Get Well card and some prayers. You can submit the cards to me, and I will get them to her and her family. So let us not forget her. She's been a faithful person that worked diligently in the community at all levels. Also, the Pines Area, Pines Road Area Business Association will hold our monthly meeting, June the 23rd. That's a Monday, June 23rd, 6:00 p.m. Representative Joy Walters will be there to give us an update as to what transpired in the legislative session. And also, City Councilwoman Ursula Bowman from District G will be present with us also. We had a committee meeting this morning of the Public Safety Citizen Review Committee. We finalized our manual that will be available to all of the members of the committee, as well as the Commissioners and the community. We had a few changes, so that final version will be read. And soon as they're ready, the clerk will let everyone know, and they will be distributed to everyone in a timely manner where we are coming into the hurricane season. We started this venture in September of 2024, and I think we have a good basic foundation as to a resource booklet that will help our individual citizens, whom in turn should help our Commissioners as well as the administration and all involved. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Vice President Everson. Commissioner Roy Burrell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank the Caddo Parish Commission, as well as the Commissioners, for making our 25th Annual Biz Camp a success this year. Some of our Commissioners who came to judge our business plan, I think we had invited everybody. Madam President, appreciate you coming and judging. Commissioner Young, John Paul Young this year. Commissioner Carleton. Commissioner John Yatkins. Commissioner Stefan Jones, as you were saying earlier. We started out with 75 applicants. And with the abrupt shutdown of Job Corps, we lost about 15 because we normally allow 15 slots for Job Corps students. I took a chance on Job Corps students when we started out. I wasn't sure whether or not they would fit into our model. But I looked at it from the standpoint that Job Corps is an excellent opportunity to take their trade because they're in a vocation. They're there training for a vocation or trade. And to couple it with entrepreneurship education was a perfect match. We have a lot of students from Job Corps which wind up being some of our better students in the end because they can see how they can take their, you know, their skills and take it to the marketplace and create a business with it. And they never really thought about that. They all only thought about being an employee. So we've had a lot of success with them. And as I said, it was our 25th year. And I want to thank 50 Cent and the G-Unit Foundation for partnering with us this year. Mr. Oliver Hall, he got so excited, he was there every day. And I'm hoping that we will work with them in the future. They are talking about expanding our program now. That is to be seen. Proof is always in the pudding with me. After 25 years of begging, everybody that I can beg. I'm hoping that the city will come back and support us again. They haven't supported us in a number of years, but the Caddo Commission has. So again, I want to say thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Commissioner Ron Carleton?
I apologize. This is kind of out of order, Madam President. But I wanted to just ask our CEO, has there been any update with the Job Corps? Because I haven't heard anything lately at all.
Yeah, there's an update.
Absolutely.
I should have, yeah.
Commissioners, Job Corps is still going through their, the legal process. I think they received a reprieve, just what I've heard from the news. But they're still going through the legal channels right now to be able to continue to operate.
So are the kids, well, are the kids back in?
Let me add to that, Madam Chair. The kids are coming back. They should start, I believe, Monday or Tuesday in operation. It's the last word I got from them, but the kids are coming back to campus.
Okay, thank you, because again.
They've lost some.
Right. People are still asking about these young people, thinking that they're still out there. And what I'm hearing right now is that the legalities are going on, but the announcement is that most young people will be returning back to campus Monday, Tuesday, based on whatever criteria that they have for them coming back.
But they got a judgment to allow them to reopen, is what I understand. The court did allow them to reopen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carleton. Parliamentarian?
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to let Commissioner Burrell talk about Biz Camp, but I told him I was going to talk about them real bad today. I wanted to highlight two students, Jordan Taylor and Anthony McGee.
Spend their money.
I had an opportunity, not only after we judged them, but the next day I had a chance to go to their pop-up shop in St. Vincent Mall, which was amazing to see those entrepreneurs, young entrepreneurs showcasing their talent in business. Man, I think everybody that came, we thought we'd be, you know, cute and start off with $25 to buy a few things, but those kids sent you back. I think everybody almost spent $100 easily a piece. But Anthony McGee, I want to highlight how business, his business savvy. Anthony McGee got to the point to where he had took all of our money. He had a fistful of money. They were, they used play money, but it was backed by real dollars. Anthony had gotten so good, he sold all of his goods. He started going to other people's stores, buying their inventory and reselling it to other people. Anthony McGee did an amazing job. If nobody else learned anything in Biz Camp, I know that Anthony McGee learned something. And I told him that I was going to shout him out. When I say that was amazing to see, and he didn't just resell it, he made like a $2 or a $5 profit off of what he resold. I just thought that was amazing. Those kids did a really, really great job. They did a great job presenting themselves. So I just want to applaud the ICE Group and your work for Biz Camp. So I just wanted to applaud you for that, for providing it for 25 years.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Also, I had spoken with Commissioner John Paul, John Paul Young about this. I know that summer is here. A lot of people are off, a lot of people are taking walks in their neighborhoods. A lot of kids are roaming the neighborhoods as well. It is very important, you all, that you pay attention to the, to the different causes that we have as far as it relates to animal control. We have had an uptick in a series of animal attacks. Two members of our body have been attacked by animals in their family. But please lease your animals. Please, if you know you have an aggressive animal, please get a muzzle. You don't, we don't want you to have to wait until we enforce you putting a muzzle on your animal. I definitely don't want to see one of these cases come before us and a child has been injured. Please, please, make sure that you pay attention to those ordinances that we have as it relates to animal control. I have spoken to Commissioner Young about the Animal Control Committee, as well as Director Clark and Mr. Samuel, about just increasing our education, and I look forward to working with them in the future about that. But please, y'all, please make sure that you're controlling your animals this summer. We have had an unusual number of uptick in incidents, and we don't want any of those to turn fatal. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Parliamentarian Thomas, great point. Vice President Ken Everson?
Yes, I forgot to mention, Head Start has been fully funded through February of 2026, and that's basically because of the efforts of the lobbying from the National Head Start Association and many friends throughout the nation relative to the Head Start program. So it just goes to show you, don't just take no for an answer because we all have the same constituents, irrespective to our political jurisdictions. However, we all have the same constituents, and some of us are closer to them and more attentive to the needs as others. And it's our responsibility to make sure we advocate in their behalf. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Everson. See no other Commissioners on the board to speak? All right. I think at this time, we skipped the Administration Report.
Commissioners, I didn't have anything additional from the work session.
Okay. Did anyone have any action items for the Administrator? Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much.
Okay, did we have a President's Report today?
I do. I have a very brief one now, since I think some of those items have already been addressed about the Job Corps, as well as the Head Start funding. I would like to start off by reminding everyone of the Intergovernmental Committee Meeting on next week, on June 25th at 11:30 a.m. It will be held at the Harbor on Knight Street. So I wanted to start off by reminding everyone of that. I have shared the Leadership List, my newsletter, with each of you, and I think a lot of the information that I would have in my report today is also on here. But I did want to, I don't know, I've stepped out the chamber. If Parliamentarian Thomas touched on artish?
I did not, but you could share how great that was.
It was. It was an awesome experience, and it's definitely not your average art festival. This past weekend downtown in Shreveport came alive with artish. It was a vibrant celebration of black art, music, fashion, and community. We had the opportunity to meet George Floyd's brother and his sister-in-law, who were here, and they are advocates, of course, of change. And we were elated to be able to have a conversation with them and listen to the work that is still to be done out here. But the food trucks, the music setups, the pop-up vendors, it was a huge event and a cultural experience that lit up the city with color, connection, and creativity. As I close, I wanted to elaborate on Juneteenth, the celebration of freedom. As a black woman and elected official, Juneteenth is not just a historical milestone. It is a deeply personal reminder of the sacrifices, the resilience and courage that paved the way for the freedoms we now hold. For me, the journey toward understanding freedom and leadership began at an early age. I watched my mother and my father take a stand for their rights, refusing to accept injustice and always willing to uplift others. They didn't just speak about change, they embodied it. Their determination taught me that freedom is not given, it is fought for, it is nurtured, and it is defended. On June 19, 1865, enslaved black Americans in Galveston, Texas finally learned of their freedom, two and a half years after the Emancipation Proclamation was signed. That delay reminds us that justice may be delayed, but it's not denied. It is our duty to ensure that freedom is not just celebrated, but actively protected for future generations. But as we reflect on the legacy of Juneteenth, we must also recognize that true equality cannot be achieved through injustice. The struggles we face today reminds us that there is still so much work to be done. But violence, division, and hatred are not the answer. There is no place in our democracy for violence. When we have the power to create change through leadership, through advocacy, and unity, today, I stand on the shoulders of those who fought for the right to vote, the right to lead, and to shape the future of our communities. Their struggle is our charge to continue advocating for equity, opportunity, and justice in every space that we occupy. Let Juneteenth be a celebration of progress, a commitment to leadership, and a promise to never stop pushing forward. Because when we lead, when we serve, and when we uplift our communities, we honor the legacy of Juneteenth, not just in words, but in action. Happy Juneteenth, everyone. Let's continue the work. Thank you. That will conclude my President's Report.
Thank you very much. We do not have public hearings today on.
I have. Commissioner Roy Burrell?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am, I just wanted to have a point of information to, just for the public. Fireworks was only, in terms of state legislation, the fireworks were only for July 4th. But as a legislator, I had passed some legislation to.
But as a legislator, I had passed some legislation to extend it back up to Juneteenth, so that we would have fireworks being allowed to celebrate Juneteenth. I thought it was remarkable, because on most celebrations, you would have, we celebrate them with fireworks, and Juneteenth was not included. And so I just wanted to let the public know that they can buy fireworks.
They can purchase fireworks?
Yeah.
And they're allowed to ignite them?
Yes.
For the 19th of June. Thank you for that service. All right. Vice President Everson.
Yes, ma'am. I had one deal that I had forgotten. I wanted to share with everyone, and I saw this in a museum, and I think it's, it's very fitting, and it reflects back to what I stated that about we have a right to advocate on behalf of our constituents. And I published this in my Words of Wisdom section of my monthly newsletter, and it states, "If we have the courage and tenacity of our forebears, who stood firmly like a rock against the lash of slavery, we shall find a way to do for our day, which we're in now, that they did for theirs." Mary McLeod Batum. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Everson. And also, I would like to remind everyone that the Let the Good Times Roll Festival kicks off on, is that Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and even Monday with a? Which one, what is it? Oh, the Art Fort, okay. It's in the newsletter. So it's Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Thank you. And Monday, we got an extra day for the Let the Good Times Roll Festival. All right.
Okay. Ready for?
We're ready.
Okay, thank you so much.
They want me to keep talking, but I'm not.
The next items, we do not have any public hearings on zoning ordinances or regular ordinances, because we do not have any for final passage today. So we'll move forward to items for introduction by title, where we do have one zoning and a few regular items. The first is the introduction of ordinance 6549 of 2025. That is an ordinance to amend Volume 2 of the Code of Ordinances of the Parish of Caddo as amended, the Caddo Parish Unified Development Code, relative to unnecessary and inconsistent zoning districts with all of their provisions included herein, and otherwise provide with respect thereto. Then we bring, we go to ordinances for introduction by title, where we have, I believe, three items, or four items. The first is the introduction of 6550 of 2025. That's an ordinance to deem property surplus and authorize the sale of surplus property owned by the Parish of Caddo, and otherwise provide with respect thereto. The next one is the introduction of ordinance 6551 of 2025. That's an ordinance declaring certain adjudicated properties to be surplus and to authorize the parish administrator or a designate to sell the Parish of Caddo's tax interest in certain surplus adjudicated properties, and otherwise provide with respect thereto. Those properties are in District 3. The next item is the introduction of ordinance 6552 of 2025. That's an ordinance to close and abandon a portion of the 15-foot-wide utility easement in the Northwood Trace subdivision unit number 2, in Section 36, Township 19, North Range 15 West, in the Parish of Caddo, and otherwise provide with respect thereto. That item is in District 2. And the final item for introduction today is ordinance 6553 of 2025. That's an ordinance amending the budget of estimated revenues and expenditures for the Riverboat Fund and the Oil and Gas Fund to provide for an appropriation to Northwest Louisiana Food Bank, and otherwise provide with respect thereto. Those items will be available for a public hearing and a final consideration at your January, I'm sorry, your July 3rd meeting, and they will join the items from your last regular session on that agenda as well. So we have no work session minutes to consider today, nor do we have resolutions. That did include just a couple of items on there, so that you would remember, these items are gonna be on the, on July 3rd agenda as well. We don't have any additional new business, and so that brings us to our second round of communiques and committee reports.
All right, I see none at this time. I just wanna say thank you to the commissioners who have endured coming in for our special work session, as well as carrying out the business for our regular meeting agenda. I know that we had to adjust our schedule due to the Juneteenth holiday. All right, Mr. Clark, next item.
Okay. Next item is citizens' comments later rivals, and we have not received any additional requests.
All right. All right. Meeting adjourned. I have a safe and happy Juneteenth weekend.